You good?
Yeah.
Okay. Call to order the Berlin School Committee meeting of October 2nd. This is the payroll, we're working on that, correct? The consent agenda includes the September 11th open session meeting minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
I second it.
Okay, was there anything, any changes or anything?
No, nothing.
Good, good to me. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Communications, we did have a letter from Dorothy Dimitri, who has been taking care of the Reed Tyler for us, the Reed Tyler Scholarship with Bodich and Dewey. She is sending us business cards with the next trust officer's information because she is retiring. And says it's been a pleasure working with us these past years, and we thank her for all the work she's done for us. Let's see, petitions and audiences relating to items on the agenda. Okay, moving on to the CPAC report. Nope, okay. All right, then we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Moving right along.
Yes, we are.
First, I'd like to just say that the special town meeting for Berlin has been set for November 28th. Berlin will be having a special town meeting that we as school committee have requested. We requested this at the regional school committee meeting, and the purpose of this is so that they can vote to have the sixth graders become part of the region effective July 1st, 2013. The current amendment agreement that was voted back in November of 2009 states that the sixth graders will become part of the regional agreement effective upon the opening of the school. So, we're opening in January, and we don't want the sixth graders to go in there in January. Boylston has already voted, it was a unanimous vote last week, to have the sixth graders go in effective July 1st, so now it's just protocol. We need to have this all completed and approved by December 31st, so that we can bring it forward to DEFC for final approval. The next piece is the supervision and evaluation state mandated training. The principals, the assistant principal, and myself, we started the evaluation training last Friday, we went to our first training. It's a three full day training. Last Friday was in Rockland, so that was quite a trip. But in the end of October and in November, that training is going to be right in Auburn, in Auburn, Mass, High School. It's provided through Teachers 21, it's a very expensive training, however, the state has mandated that we have this training. So if we were a race to the top school district, it would have been able to be funded through the race to the top grant funds. But we're not. Once we're of some reason or another, it would be pulled out of that program. So, we're just utilizing other resources and so forth to fund some of our other grants we're able to use to do some of the funding. But that's what we're in the process of doing. What we noticed on Friday at the Rockland training, there were 11 districts there with their teams, anywhere from three to six people, part of their team. And seven of them were raised to the top schools, and only four were not raised to the top schools. So they were quite envious of us because we're doing the training this year, so that we can implement it with the teachers next year, where the race to the top districts are doing the training and the implementation following the year. So they're extremely stressed out doing this. So, they're commending us for trying to be proactive in getting our training, and explaining to them too that we're going to be starting to train our staff as well, so that they won't have the full training before the end of the year. So, that was a good thing. The building project update, there were two major discussions at the building project. One was the new bleachers, and this was on September 13th, so it was two days after our last meeting that we had the building committee meeting. One was the bleachers. The committee has decided to order new bleachers, the cost of the bleachers that we have versus the new bleachers would have been pretty much the same money. The difference was, we would have only had the warranty on those new bleachers for about one more, on the older bleachers, for one more year. Ordering the new bleachers will have a five-year warranty on the bleachers. We are still investigating options of what to do with those bleachers, because it was a community process of donating funds to be able to purchase those bleachers. So it was a really difficult decision with the building committee. So they're trying to find out if the company is hussy, and they'll see if they could buy them back or give some kind of a credit or merchandise credit. We're looking to see if out in the market, there's a market for them, in which case, once we have the funds, we would go back to the Booster Club and ask them how we could re-invest in another project for the new building. So they're trying to do that. The other piece that was a large discussion was the fact that the floors, the concrete floors in the classrooms had more moisture than what the contractor had proved. That percentage of moisture had changed from the original date of the plant, and the concern with the moisture is not so much getting the carpet wet, but the acidity level that is in the concrete when it is too moist, that eliminates some of the quality of the adhesive. So they were just concerned about that, but they did vote to go forward and have those installed. So those actually have been installed in the majority of the classrooms at this point.
Are they going to install in all the classrooms, or just?
Yep, they were starting on the second floor, that actually has less moisture.
Okay.
And hopefully by the time they put down, there'll be a little bit less moisture in the process. It was close, it just was not quite there. So that's it for my report. I also have here though, a summary for the Director of Financial Services, Kimmy Lamica. As you know, she's still working with us part-time, she's with us Monday, Wednesday, Friday. She officially starts on November 7th, and boy, I think all of us have that countdown of when she can be here full-time. But when she is here, she's working long, extensive hours to try to, you know, keep the pace of where we're going. But we are getting into a budget process. She and I sat down and looked at what's been submitted to school committees and to the towns previously in previous years, and there's been such a changeover that there's such a variety of formats that I think schools and towns have been looking at. So I'm just going to read for you what she had sent to me. "The FY 2014 budget will include a complete view of the entire operation, including all funding sources, to provide a better understanding of the resources needed to make the school program operate. It will then be illuminated to show each funding source and amounts in support of the operation, such as grants and revolving funds, as well as any specific guidelines for the use of those funds." We could not find any previous information that showed you what the full funding source has been. We don't know if you've received that in the past, or if it's always just been your general funds budget. Because we think it's important that when you're looking at your budget, that you should also be looking at the grants and any revolving accounts, because that's the full budget of your district. So, I don't think, we couldn't find anything in our files or anything to show that.
Probably not all encompassing within the budget, but they may have given reports separately for revolving accounts and grants and so on and so forth.
Okay. So in this way, we will be able to demonstrate the impact of one of these supporting funding sources changes. We anticipate the first draft of the superintendent's budget to be ready for review by the committee by November. So here we go.
Wow.
"We would like to work with the committee to ensure we present the appropriate level of detail and the desired format to the community, so as to provide transparency about the school operations." So, you know, our process might be a little bit different than what you've had in the past, I don't know, you know, we're trying to figure out what would be the appropriate piece for committee. So, I like to see visuals as well, to look at trends over time, I like to present things like that. I think if any of you have seen the videos of the previous placement, one of those videos did have, at a school committee meeting, did have one of my budget, preliminary budget presentations.
You had pie charts and the different things.
I had the pie charts and the graphs, and looking at trends over time, school choice funding as well.
Right.
So, I just like to give that type of information as a preliminary, and then as we start meeting more regularly, also in December, then we'll have more of a line with them. We are as an administrative team, looking at all the staffing, not just classroom staffs, but also our specialists, our music, our art, PE, we're looking at all of those, special education, looking at all the support services and so forth, to see what that impact is. And, you know, we will most likely have some form of a decrease in some of those services, but the programming will remain the same. We will not be changing the programming from pre-K to 5, but we might not need a whole-time position in something that might be .8 or .75 or things like that. We have not finalized any of that yet by any means, we're still looking at all the schedules of what that looks like, and looking at the numbers and the special ed needs and where those need to go. So, just letting you know that we are looking at all of that. Also been looking a little bit into the transportation, the amount of students that we're transporting. Berlin, for example, currently has three buses, three routes. Do we still need three routes or not? But when you look at the geographic, that's what more or less causes you those three routes. And I've done a route myself, I followed a bus route one morning, and I followed to see, and they keep moving, and it's a full 45-minute ride, you know, on nice weather and nice day stuff. And they're all coming in to the school building within two minutes of each other, and they all leave at the same time. So they're all a pretty steady process, so we still have to look at it. I don't think losing one grade level at that point is enough to eliminate a bus route. I think we would still be keeping, at this time, I've been looking at both bus routes today this week.
I know they have a larger bus and a smaller bus, I know. Any chance that we could use a smaller bus, that would have cost any different?
I can look into it, I don't really know enough about that. Do you know anything about that?
I don't.
Is it a smaller bus or a larger bus with the cost differences, if there is any?
I don't know if there is. I, we've noticed this year though, an increase in the number of students that are in parent pickup, enormous amount of students that are now getting picked up, so for that alone, you might be able to cut a bus.
A long line today.
Right, it is, and you know what it is, it's been typically like that, so we should probably do kind of a study of the numbers, or find out from parents if that's going to be a regular pickup for them.
Will we be hearing what Carol recommends to you also, before you make your recommendation to us?
Well, pretty much, we're on the same page.
Okay.
I think, don't you think?
Okay.
And anything that I'm looking at, I'm looking at her recommendations of what she's determining, and Karen's as well. I mean, we're all been, we have all been sitting as administrative teams, looking at each other's buildings and giving suggestions to each other as well. So it's not at all a one-person decision of what happened.
Okay, because every superintendent's a little bit different. Some have preferred to have the principal make the presentation to the school committee, and then the superintendent will make her recommendation about that to us.
Yeah, I think we're really all working as a collaborative team.
Okay, good.
So I think when you see the presentations, it's going to be a little bit of everybody on the admin team is really going to be giving you portions of what we're seeing.
Good, great.
It's a collaborative process, so it shouldn't be one person reporting it. I mean, happy to do it as a superintendent, but I just feel that everybody's contributed to this, so I think everybody should have that opportunity.
Okay, good.
Next. Well, I just wanted to give you a little bit of an update on the ELL students in the district. We're seeing more younger students coming in, in Berlin and across the, all of the districts. We have one student who's moved in. You still have very small numbers for your English language learners, but we also have some students in preschool right now, coming up. And we have a lot of new regulations coming up for the English language learners, one of which is access testing is going to replace MELA-O and MEPA, if you've heard of those. Those are the tests that we gave in the past to evaluate the language skills of our English language learners. So, we just today got our pass codes to go in and get our training for the access codes, the access test. So we'll be starting that in January, instead of the MELA-O and MEPA, they'll be gone. And Massachusetts has adopted the WIDA standards for English language learners, and the WIDA standards are really focused on what language students need to know in order to access the curriculum. And I think they're very clear with this new WIDA standards that our English language learner programs are not teaching the subject, they're teaching the language so that the students can access the subject. As we get more and more English language learners in the school, it's difficult to have one teacher teaching that, so that teacher's responsibility becomes teaching the language of reading, and the language of math, and the language of social studies, so that they can go back into the classroom and access those subjects. So it's a little bit of a turnaround, and as we align our curriculum, we're going to be adding in the WIDA standards along with it, we're going to be identifying the language that they need in each subject area that goes with each strand, and they're all very nicely tied together. So we'll be doing a lot of work on that in the next few years. But did want you to know that the numbers are starting to come up, they're starting to come up in the younger grades, where in the past, it seems like you had them moving, students moving in at all different grade levels. These are students who have been born pretty much in Berlin and are now hitting school age, so we see the preschool and the kindergarten students coming in. And that's it. All right.
Good. Okay, Carol, principals' report.
Sure. I'm going to start with the MCAS report, and I did copy some information, and if you want to, just a couple out, two folks out. Maureen and I sat together for a webinar that the Department of Ed put on for us to understand the new accountability data system that's used to replace AYP, and No Trial Left Behind at this time. As you know, that Massachusetts requested a waiver, and we received that, so we're moving into this new reporting mechanism. So that's what I'm going to take you through, just the highlights of that. I didn't copy the whole report, and I can certainly send that to you, but I just wanted to hit on the highlights and then take a look at our MCAS results and where we're going to go this year with those results. It looks like two pages that are the same got copied, so we'll just take a look at that first page. The major reporting changes for 2012. The NCLB goal of 100% proficient was replaced now with a new goal of reducing proficiency gaps by half by 2017. So that's become our target year, and what we're trying to do is really, we have a target number that we have to get to, we really have to narrow the gap, and I'll show you that in just a moment, what our scores are. The accountability status labels have been changed now, eliminated from restructuring, those kinds of terms, we're only using accountability and assistance levels for all schools. We have a scale of one to five, and we're placed on a specific level, one to five, based on where our scores place us. We're right now a level two, with level one to five, and level one being the highest that you can be at. So, we're making progress, but we're still at risk, and we need to watch those numbers, and we really need to move toward our target number. So AYP is replaced with a new performance measurement. It's called a Progress Performance Index, it incorporates student growth, science, and other indicators. And if you skip the next page for a moment, one of the changes with this mechanism is that the data that's reported, if you remember when we used to look at the AYP report, it was broken down by subgroups very specifically. That number is now incorporated into one high-needs subgroup, and it takes in students belonging in low-income, students with disabilities, ELL, former English language learners, all into one subgroup. So you'll also see that in our status. What else do I want to tell you? Oh, school percentile reported, indicating schools' overall performance on PPI indicators relative to other schools in the same grade span. We're going to keep an eye on this because our grade span is changing next year. We have one score reported to us, but next year, we're changing from pre-K six. So our score is up against any schools in the state that are pre-K six. Next year will be aligned to schools that are pre-K through five. So that's, so it will, I will be curious to see how that's going to change where, what our scores are. What are some key PPI concepts? PPI is a measurement of progress toward a group's own gap narrowing goals. The scale runs from zero to 100, our target is 75. We need to get to 75, and there's a very specific formula that goes into coming to that target of 75. The state gives us points for progress we've made already, it gives us points for participation in the MCAS, they're all weighed with a certain number of points that we receive, zero to 100. So that's how we end up with our final score. Approximately 80% of schools are classified right now in the state as level one or two. So we are among those 80% of schools. What are some key level concepts? This is the one through five level. Most schools and districts are classified into a level based on a four-year trend, so we're beginning that, we've looked at the trend before, and now we're moving into that four-year trend. The districts are classified based on the level of the lowest performing school, of course, we're just one school. If we were, several schools in a district would be based on that score. School percentiles represent performance relative to other schools, I just spoke about that in the grade span. And if you flip to the next page, you will actually see what I'm talking about, and there's the accountability data for us. Right now, if you look at our, where it says accountability information, it shows us that it's a level two, currently not meeting our gap narrowing goals, that's what we have to focus on. We have to demonstrate to the state that we are making progress. All of our students, if you see the, in that same box where we have a 52, that's based on the schools in the same grade span. So we have a 52 out of that target mark of 75. If you look into the next area, that's the schools, that's toward our proficiency gap, that's the progress we're making. We needed again to get a 75, so we're at a 66 right now, all of our students. And in the high-needs, that's that subgroup that I told you about, that's all those groups together, we're a 69 out of 75.
Can I just say one more thing?
Sure.
And you see the areas up here where it talks about all students. You have to be a 75 there, and a 75 in both of these, all students in high-needs areas to be a level one. You need 75 in all three of those areas to be a level one school system.
And the one down here below too?
No.
No, 65, just.
Where you see the all students, where it's 66, and the high-needs at 69, and then you see above, where it talks about the overall school performance, is it a 52? Those three areas, you have to have a 75 or better in all of those areas in order to get, to stay at a level one. Which we have a lot of growth and improvement that needs to happen in this area, which you can ask.
Right. I also included in this information actually where we are in comparison to the rest of the state. If you turn to the next page, you're going to see the school, district, and state comparison. Obviously, the school and district are the same, and then you can see where we're at against the state. One of the, one of the highlights of, I think, of this report that we received this year from the MCAS is our grade three. We had no children in morning, and I think even though we had some children in mathematics that were in morning, I'm seeing a decrease in morning in the third grade, and I'm attributing that to the coming together of our literacy program, our ELAs. It's, you know, we said in the beginning it was going to be seven years before everything came into place, and I think we're seeing the results of those children working through the new literacy program, of staff that was trained and has been able to work the program, and really strengthen their skills and strategies in that area, and support the students with a balanced literacy approach. So I'm hoping that trend continues. It should, if it works the way typically these trends in education work. We were really pleased to see that result, and those children would have been the ones that really came in as we were getting solid with all of that training. So, and I see the same with mathematics, I mean, it was two years less than, or two years after we had implemented the new mathematics program, and so I think we're starting to see an improvement in that area as well. We still are looking at fourth, fifth, and sixth grade. We were disappointed with some of the decrease in the scores. If you take a look at fourth grade last year. And this of course is percentage, if you look, we had 27 students in fourth grade, 56% of those students, or 15 students were in needs improvement. And that was in ELA. In mathematics, it was 16 students in needs improvement, 59% of the school. So we really have to take a good look at that group and see where we need to strengthen those areas. We're already starting to see some math units that we need to switch around, because we're finding that those are the power standards, those are the ones that are appearing the most on the MCAS, and some of the units in our mathematics program come toward the end of the year. We recognize that we have to change, we have to change those units so that we're able to target those areas more specifically before the MCAS occurs.
I just wanted, yeah, I just wanted to add one more piece, is that, and this is something that gets confusing for people.
Now you're attending for the line of the MCF, great.
Right here is looking at this year's score only, okay? And when you are looking at this piece, when you're down here looking at all students on your CPI, you're looking at over a series of the last four years. So it's looking at the growth percentile over four years of time. So I just want you to realize that this is not the score because of this year only, and that's something that's different. It goes back in 2009, and if you looked at every, their annual PPI, which is your annual score of, looking at our 75, in 2011, you only got a 45. But in 2012, you got 75. So last year's growth, looking at individual year, last year's growth was significant compared to the previous year's growth. But when you look at over four years' time, you didn't make enough growth. So I just want to clarify that, because I don't want people to think, well, all these changes that have happened over the last year or so, and we're not seeing any great results over it. We did see great results over this last year, but when you look at the average over four years, we still have those four years that have been a big hit. And your 2011, only getting a 45, is still going to impact you for the next two years. You need to remember those things as you're moving forward. Still be showing growth the next two years, but that 45 is a big hit.
Yeah, I was going to ask, when you're looking at the fourth grade scores, I guess my question is, this, as their third grade scores, I guess I get, you know, is that where you saw the decline too, where the third grade score's better for this particular group? I mean, do you look at that, I know individually you look at that?
We do, I know exactly, it's that cohort of students.
Right.
And that's, we've talked about that in years past. It's, we also look at the pattern of that particular class over time.
Right.
Because it's hard, I know we've talked about so many presentations, each year we take that group, and we have to look at them, where are they at from third grade to fourth grade? third grade to fourth grade, fifth grade? And we do see a trend with that, you know, a pattern with that, with those particular classes that are maybe struggling more or, um, performing on a higher level. So, yeah, we do look at it that way too.
And some of it, I think that, um, I know we've talked about, is the fact too that ELA and math has come out with new Common Core standards. And so we have not yet implemented the alignment of those Common Core standards. And so, you know, some of the MCAS testing is starting to assess with those Common Core standards that we have not yet put, put into place. So that's part of the process that we're doing this year, that Carol actually being our curriculum coordinator, is working with the each building's curriculum specialist as well to make sure that we're doing this across all three districts. And we're aligning, you know, some of the implementation needs to start and we make sure it's more, it's a transitional piece and that transition is not going to happen in the districts. And not having a curriculum director for the last couple of years, yet having a new curriculum alignment request is really, we're seeing the impact of that.
I, I want to add to, when Nadine's speaking about, I think one of the positive pieces for our school is that we do need in grade levels and we do talk a lot, I mean, that's our focus is curriculum. But the staff is, is learning too, is really training with me to be able to look at data more closely and to not only analyze the data, but take it and move it forward into the practices in the classroom. That involves collaboration and that's what we're, we're doing during that time. You'd keep, you may have heard about SMART goals. I mean, we're really establishing those measurable goals with student, student progress and what are we, what are, is our target? What do we need to improve on and how are we going to get there? So that conversation is new really to the staff and it, it's going to take us a few years to get there as well. So that's one, one, at least we have that piece in place, but it's been, it's challenging to have those conversations about curriculum. What does it mean? What, what, when we set up these standards, what do the standards really mean to us in our everyday practice? What does it look like when we're in the classroom with children? And, and how do we communicate that to children? And really is a matter of interpreting those standards in, in our, in our terms, in our teachable terms and also for our children as well, so that they understand what we're teaching and they're learning those concepts and skills. So we're really very, let's say, young, new at, at this work and I feel that we're moving forward. I mean, I think just, I don't need, know Nadine, I think you had talked about the eleven conditions and the effect of schools. We're really in the beginning stages of that piece of it. I mean, we, we have a really strong administrative team in place. We've spent more time talking about curriculum than I've had in my four and a half, four plus years. It's, it's, it's the priority now and I think that's going to make a difference as well and it's going to make a difference to the, to the staff. I mean, we're going to bring it back to, to the staff. So, um, some of the things I wanted to mention to you that, that we are, that I, I plan to put in place with the staff this year. So we're, in addition to the alignment, we have to have deeper, more targeted discussions to, to really pinpoint those areas of weaknesses and develop some strategies for improvement in those areas, not only for the, for the grades that are taking the MCAS, but also the earlier grades. I mean, we have, we have my pre, our preschool is already doing open response. They've been doing it for two years now. And the writing that our kindergarten students are doing is amazing, amazing things are happening in kindergarten with those pieces and they're doing open response in math and ELA. So it's not only just about the, the, those students taking the tests, it's really about what happens before that to prepare them. Um, we're going to focus more, we continue to focus on open response. We noticed that continues to be a weak area and, uh, I talked about rearranging units in math. We, we, we want to talk about that piece and, um, we're, hopefully we'll get our Title One grant in because we do want to have the tutor on board again this year. We're going to offer the MCAS classes again after school and we're going to try to set those up earlier than we did last year to give even more time. We had a great turnout of students in that, in those after-school classes. I mean, it was just amazing that the kids were actually excited to be after-school and, and practicing together. I think we just need some more time to do that. I want to do more with parent communication with PTO, with LINK and with some of the other groups that we have to really talk about what we need to strengthen that at home as well. And the, that's, not just the, I don't know, we're trying to, I know the teachers have, and I've struggled with saying we're all about the MCAS, but the reality is we're a public school that responds, answers to the state and we do have to, to take that seriously. And I, I think that's going to be important communication to parents to understand that and, uh, I was hoping to be able to send maybe samples home to parents so they could practice with the children, their child at home, you know, once a week, getting, getting a, an MCAS sample. I, I also think it's going to be important to communicate to parents as well that we're a team and I spoke about this at Open House, that we need to send the message just to the children to come and do your best every day, that when the testing does come around that it's not time to go on vacation, you know, to, you have to be there at the school during that time to really discourage that kind of, um, activity and to come in with a positive approach to, to taking the test. And that's something that I've heard as an educator that, you know, families feel differently about the MCAS and that's often communicated to the children as well. And we really have to come together and say, this unfortunately, this is what we have to do. If, if this is the work we have to do, well then let's give it our very best because we can all say we don't like it. But the reality is we have to do it, so if we have to do it, let's give it our best. So that, that's a message I would send to, to families as well and we're working our hardest at school.
Is, some of the things that we decided last year after analyzing the MCAS scores, um, steps that we were going to take to improve, have you seen improvement? You said you did see improvement in the math and, and, in the third grade.
We did and interestingly, we, we saw a significant increase in our special needs students and, and, and the scores improvement. So we were very excited to see that. So we have seen growth and as Nadine said, we've made progress, we just haven't met that, that target yet. And, and we do have, and we have time to do it, but we, we take that time serious, like that amount of time seriously. We don't say, oh, well, hopefully we've plenty of time. We, we don't. We recognize the urgency of this. So we want to stay up there. We want to get back to, we want to get up to level one.
I think in the future, I like hearing what, how you're analyzing the data you just received and it's nice to, at some po, point maybe halfway through the year or whenever you, um, feel that you've made strides because of the things you've decided, the steps that you've decided you need to take, um, it's nice to hear about that too because otherwise it's the same thing every year at the beginning of the year. You analyze the data.
Right.
And then we don't know, did, did we improve because of the anali, analyzing or not?
So when you speak to that, Chris, two things I would mention. One is, I think, I agree with you, when we analyzed the data in the past, the challenge then was to take that data and utilize it in the classroom. How, what does that look like?
Right.
How do we do that? That's the piece where I say that is really the learning curve for the teachers and to, to learn how to take that information and what does it really mean?
Well.
And how, how can we teach? So that's, that is what we're learning to do now and to, to do that in a, in a much more effective way. Uh, and I was thinking as you're saying this, that I think as we have these conversations, if I can have maybe a team of teachers coming in, you can s, maybe see, they can model what a, what a professional learning community team looks like.
It may be happening, it's just that we're not hearing about it.
Mm-hmm.
You know what I mean?
Well, actually, um, Chris, we're, that's part of a, um, a task force that I'm, I'm working on this year too, is looking at assessments. And I'm trying to get a task force from all three districts to work together to look at our benchmark testing because we don't have a consistent benchmark assessment tool to be looking every so often on this data. We have pre-test, they have pro, um, post-test, maybe they look at classroom observation, some of the daily work, but to actually measure the growth over time, if you gave them a standard assessment in the fall and then you get a benchmark, um, in the winter and you do another benchmark in the spring, what are we looking at in preparation? And, and there are many assessment, benchmark assessment tools that are out there that actually do give you that prediction, so when it comes time for MCAS, it's not a surprise. Not an aha, you know, you can say, oh, that's what we figured. Um, so we don't have a consistent tool right now and, you know, we're not alone. There are other districts in the same situation and there are some districts that have been using benchmark assessments from K to twelve for years. So there, there's everywhere in between. So our focus this year is, um, to have that task force to really do some research on other schools and other districts and what they use for benchmark assessments, um, on pre-K to twelve and, um, determine what we're going to be using as a district. Because part of the new evaluation tool that will be implemented next year is we need to have set district-wide assessment. So if we do the research this year, it's another proactive way of doing the research this year to determine what's going to be a good source, so that next year we start implementing it, we start training it to our staff and we start getting, um, prompters to do the assessments and stuff like that periodically in the buildings, so that then they'll have new data that they can be looking at within their grade level teams, their content level teams, the vertical teams and try to determine what they need to do for resources. So we are, we are in the process of doing it.
Do you guys have any questions?
Well, I was going to ask a question too. With last year, I think it was the first year you had the grant, I don't know if it was a Title One grant or what, for the after-school MCAS? And I guess I, um, on a personal level, it, I know that it helped, um, my student, but I just wondered if too, if you were looking at, at those other students that, I don't know, whatever criteria at risk or whatever, that were invited to participate in the after-school program? If, if you had a chance and looked at their individual data, just maybe if they were an upper grade from the year before to that year and did that after-school program actually help those students?
Yes.
I mean, I feel confident that it did, but I just wondered.
It did, and, yep, those were some of the students we were speaking about and it, and what we saw happen was students who were right and that kind of cusp moved up to the next level and we were really pleased to see that, just the extra attention. We do use a set of criteria to invite students into that, into that piece, so it's, it's a number of assessments and, um, so we will continue that as well this year as long as we, we get that grant. But, um, yeah, I think it was very effective. So if we can get more students in, we do that.
I just have one more question. Um, you're talking about aligning curriculum.
Mm-hmm.
How long is that process going to take? Let's see.
Well, it's interesting, Chris, because we actually have a training today with the administrative staff to look at some options for tools to have it all database, so that the teachers can see the standards for their grade level. They can start pulling their resources and start doing their mapping and what standards they're going to address. And then it even does a cross-check where it even shows what standards they have not yet addressed in their mapping, so they can go back and determine how they're going to re-address them. So that is a process that, um, it's intense, but it was great to see a tool because I can tell you that in my experiences it was, here's the, here's the standard and he has a piece of paper and he has a graph and chart it and get it done. And, um, I can tell you that if teachers can work as a team collaboratively, um, if they can be pulled out for like two days and they have two solid days to work on it, it can be done that quickly. What's not done that quickly is the actual implementation portion. That's the part that takes the majority of the time.
Right.
But they can put the actual, because you can put it all into print and have your ideas, but then you've got to go back and rethink of when you're teaching what. And to have all the teachers on the same page of, this is what we're teaching this month and this is what we're teaching next month and this is what we're teaching following month. Um, we're working on the ELA and the math. I mean, this year, throughout this year, you will start to see this implementation going to place because, you know, we are having it all aligned pretty.
And I think it will, will go fairly smoothly because this, the template that we were looking at really speaks to the backward design, uh, that Grant Wiggins has, that we, we took our courses with, um, Louis Thompson.
Louis Thompson.
And, um, standards-based education, it's, it's all of that essential understandings, essential questions. It's really what we're doing already and it's a matter of just putting it in one place and really having it there in front of us and having it as a living, breathing document rather than, as Nadine said, sticking it in a binder and putting it on the shelf.
Right.
So we don't, we're at a stage where we're starting from pretty, I want to say zero in the sense of all, all on the same page. I mean, certainly teachers have their own curriculum materials, but as far as having it as a school or having it with Boyleston, which is what we're planning to do as a team, we don't have that piece. So we, we not only are aligning curriculum, we're developing curriculum simultaneously and creating maps along with that. So I know it's, it's, um, yeah.
We've been talking, talking a long time, you know? I'm anxious to see the progress.
To see the progress.
The other piece that's, that's important to realize is that, um, you have an Envisions map, which is a, a text or resource, I don't ever say it's a curriculum because it's not, it's a textbook resource, tool, map curriculum. And, um, that's consistent with both elementary schools. Your literacy programs are not consistent and there's a lot of gaps within the, that literacy program. And that to me is your priority right now. That I want to see aligned before anything else, is that literacy. And for staff to identify what areas you need to give more resources for, identify those resources, tell us what we need. So that's really going to be the first round is, you know.
Question.
So, my look at this, I know if the fourth grade is kind of what folks be, you know, strong, so, you know, it seems like you have a, a class that's doing poorly and, and they do poorly in the third grade and they were tested. That's a question. And, and so do you really look at and say, well, maybe really there should be some kids that aren't ready, they're not for sure enough to go on to the fourth grade. You know, you don't have to worry about the subject area, it just seems like, you know, there's certainly a problem area. And I think, you know, the group dynamics from one year to the next, you know, changes and changes. Would you look at that in terms of the bands and students at the end of the year, what their MCAS scores are and stuff like that?
I'll answer it. I, would it be that easy? Um, but there, it's, we're looking at each child and, well, first of all, we don't get our MCAS results until the following year, until the September of the next year. So as far as looking at that score at the end of the year, we really couldn't do that. But I think builds a bigger picture than, than just retaining a child, you know, which I, I really would discourage entertaining that by a fourth grade level. We're usually looking at children in kindergarten level for that or preschool level. Um, by the time we're in fourth grade, we're seeing so many complex needs of each child as a learner. I mean, it's not as simple as maturity or not being ready to move on to fifth grade. It's a really, um, part of it's accessing the curriculum and their ability or inability to do that and we try to figure out why that is, about what it is about the child that's, that's causing the issue.
I mean, but it seems like the group dynamic is a big piece of, of the classroom experience. And you have classrooms where if they're, they're serious and they all benefit from that, and if you have the opposite, that, well, I think, you need to break that up.
Yeah, group, well, group dynamic certainly does contribute to learning and it does impact the group, I would say, I agree with you with that. So, and that, you know, then you'd have to think about which, which ones would you keep back and which ones would you send forward and which, it, it is.
I'm not sure that's the under answer, but I appreciate the suggestion.
I just have one more thing. Can you believe they've changed it from AYP?
I know.
To PPI? They're getting closer to two thousand fourteen, so now they've changed it to two thousand seventeen and they've changed. And they've changed it to something completely different. And isn't that the story of your life?
When Nadine and I sat down to look at this webinar, we had to learn now, for the first time, what these changes were.
I was just catching on to AYP.
I hear you, me too. It's, and it's, it's not easy to.
And you wonder why people look at the newspaper, see numbers, and think, oh, it's, it's horrible. It's wonderful, or whatever. And it's so much more complicated.
Yeah, there's so much more to the story to tell.
It's very difficult to understand it all.
And when you go onto the DEWE website and you see your scores, you, to the far left, you can click those, it breaks it down smaller, and then you can click that, and it breaks it down smaller. So it's this unbelievable calculation, and that's why it's a convoluted.
I, and I, just to go back to the beginning of this conversation with the mention of these eleven essential conditions. I think if you look at the scores and the high scores from different districts, those pieces are in place for those districts. They've been working on these, these things a long time. And having come out of curriculum and now going back into curriculum, I'm capping as fast as I can to catch up to where these districts are, because they've continued on that path. We've had so many interruptions in this process that we, we really are just getting back on track right now. And even, even in this position for me, I, these are folks that are in full-time positions doing this work. So I'm trying to learn, relearn all of this information, try to catch up to where they're at. But I think you'll see that it's the consistency with so many of those different conditions that, that we don't, we're not, we don't have yet, but we're working. I mean, at least we've identified it, and we're moving forward. And thank goodness with Nadine, and she's, oh, boy. Let me tell you, she's pushing us, but in a really good way. And I mean that totally respectfully, and I'm thrilled. I'm really thrilled to see this.
And I keep saying to them, I'm really going at a slow pace right now. And they're like, this is slow, we've got, it's really a slow pace.
Yeah, but it's what we need to, it's what we need to do. So I'm meeting, I mean, we're meeting, wearing my other hat, with the curriculum piece as a team again on Friday with the curriculum specialist to really map out our timeline for this work. And even today, I was up at the Narragansett yesterday looking at this specific program that we had in today. And, and so now we've even moved, we may, we're considering moving forward with this, with this loop. And that would be huge for us, so that makes things even better. And I think it'll be more efficient and effective if we go in that direction, so.
We want to pull the union reps and the curriculum specialists and the department heads together to review it to see, you know, what they would think about this program. I mean, I think, to me, it's a win-win, because you have a resource right at your fingertips to be able to do it. But we have to be training the staff, and we want to be able to do that. We'd like to train the staff in November, in the starters' day, if, if this doesn't go in right, right towards the end.
This is something new, I mean, as far as your position being curriculum coordinator plus principal.
Right.
I don't know about Ruth and Angela, but I think I'd like to hear more about, how's this gonna work? How's this, you know, what does the job involve? And maybe, maybe here or at the region?
Sure, maybe.
I mean, I, I, you know, we'll leave it up to you, but I, but I think it's something that.
I think it's good to bring in a next step in the meeting, maybe a second meeting.
I mean, just how, how's this gonna work? We've tried it with the curriculum coordinator separate, and, you know, maybe it didn't work quite right. And it sounds like you're on the right trip.
A hard part is that it's very overwhelming, because it is a full-time position.
Yeah.
And trying to do two different kinds of full-time positions, I think is wonderful for them.
Right. Okay. Do you have upcoming events for us?
I do, switching over to A. I wanted to just share that we had our first all-school meeting last Thursday. And it's just wonderful to have the whole community of students there and teachers. And we shared our students of the month, we announced those names, and sang our Blue Jay song, and just celebrated being together. I want to thank Sarah Richards for coordinating that. Sarah has made a commitment this year to doing one all-school meeting each month with a different theme. So our October theme will be focusing on bullying. And it will also be incorporating English language arts and poetry, autumn poetry and readings. So it's just been a really nice way to have us all together. We had a great turnout at our open house last Thursday night as well. So thanks to all the parents for coming to that. And just was good to see so many folks coming out. What else? We have pumpkins coming again this year from the Lions Club. So thanks to the Lions Club for donating those this year. Our staff, a number of our staff were just involved in restraint training, which we annually do to get those folks certified, and that's all taken care of. We have a community reading day on October nineteenth, and I think you're reading, Chris, and Angela are reading as well. So that'll be fun, Nadine's reading, so.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
Do you want books you're reading?
No, I thought there was gonna be a signed one.
Were you gonna be assigned a book? Did you get your assigned book?
I got my assigned.
Yes, I, I was on that, but.
I was wondering if there was a symbol to that. But I got my assigned book.
I don't know what it, I know, I placed you with, I placed you.
I got a witch book.
I have nothing to do with that piece.
A witch book?
The widow's groom. Do you think this means something?
It's a little.
I'm hoping mine's a really simple book, so hopefully I'm gonna reach to the younger grades, so.
Oh, boy, oh, my gosh. So, and we do have our LINK meeting on Thursday this week with our new officers. I know I said this at open house, but since Maureen Norville is sitting right there, I want to again thank her publicly for all of her years of service as a president of LINK. And I've been thanking her at every opportunity I get. She's, but I really, we really do appreciate, I'm gonna miss Maureen, even though she's still here with us this last year, because her daughter is a sixth grader. But we do miss her in, in that, that role. But we have, Valerie Muldoon has stepped in, and we're grateful for her as well. Valerie's very active in, in our school. So we know we'll move on with good things ahead for all of us. So we have a little dinner coming up next week for those folks that, that are leaving and all, all of the board and LINK.
Oh, nice.
And heading out. So I think that's the first time we've done something like that, right? And the more food than we can ever imagine. Most of my emails, honestly, I must have twenty to thirty emails a day on the potluck dinner on what everybody's bringing. So we could probably feed the town, I'm sure of it. That's it.
Okay. We will move on to the business items and the summer program coordinator job description.
Yep, this is just a first read for the Berlin School Committee. Judy Dallin Court had provided the districts with a job description before she had left. This is a position that we pulled in the summer. However, there has never been an official job description for the summer program coordinator. So it's just being brought forward as a first read.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve the summer program coordinator? Good job.
First read.
Just approve.
Oh, you're just gonna just approve the first read?
Right.
Yep.
Right.
I make a.
So moved?
So moved, thank you.
Okay. Okay, was there anything else, suggestions?
Would, since they combined the summer program with Boylston, is there, I can't remember, is there just one summer coordinator, right, or there's?
That's right.
That would cover both?
Yeah.
Right, okay.
So they're doing the same thing? Okay. Anything else? All right, all in favor of the first, approving the first read for the summer program coordinator job description? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passes. And we have policy DN, school property disposal po- policy.
That's correct. This topic came up because the new high school that's coming into place, then we have surplus furniture and items that we don't have in the current Hondo building. So when we tried to see what do we do to dispose of these surplus items, we were advised by our attorneys as well as from the D E L C that we are to look at our policy. So when we went back to look at the policy, Kami and I realized there really is no policy in place at this time. So this is just a first read to look at the policy so that we can have everything in place. And should, we never know, but should Berlin ever have surplus items in our region, we call it a policy.
Right.
It's just a first read.
Okay. So do I hear a mo- a motion to approve the school property disposal policy for the first read? So moved?
I second it.
Okay. And would this also apply to technology, computers, things like that too?
Yep, it's all surplus items, yep.
Okay, good.
It says here in item three, items for disposition whose value is five thousand or less, the, the protocol would be followed. What if it's more than that? Because it says here, whose value is five hundred more, I mean.
Five thousand, more than five thousand dollars typically, it would be a big process.
Oh, big.
Yep.
Okay.
Anything under five thousand, it's a different process.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Substitute teacher compensation policy.
Yes, in your current policy, actually, it's in the regulations. You have, in your regulations, that substitutes, they get paid sixty-five dollars a day for the first ten days. And then they're paid seventy-five dollars a day for the remainder of the year. Then what happens is the following year, when we start, those substitutes end up going back down to sixty-five dollars a day. They're at a very difficult time to get subs, to keep subs. You know, the pay is not that it's that much, but it's average at seventy-five dollars a day. So I'm just asking the school committee that we can keep, you know, to vote, that the policy allows that once they stay, once they're at seventy-five dollars a day, that they remain at seventy-five dollars a day at the beginning of the following year. That we can keep our good subs that like to come in regularly.
I, I know, well, first off, I guess I'll ask for a motion to approve this policy for a vote, right? Okay.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. I know there was a memo in here, it's for informational. It seems like we may have done something similar before, back in 2008. Is it, do you think we've made this clear enough? So in another five years, we'll be looking back and.
Yeah, actually Cheryl and I actually went back and forth with the language.
Okay. Just want to make sure that everybody's comfortable with the language, that it means what we want it to mean. Okay.
Yeah, we went back and forth with the language to make sure. The reality is, Chris, hopefully in five years, I'm still here and I can explain it.
Yes, exactly.
Explain.
All right. We had a motion and a second. Okay, then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passes. Approval of the bus brochure.
Right, so this actually was brought to the regional committee first. And then it was actually left on to this committee agenda. But the reality is, is that there's some changes here that the school committee has asked that we've done. This has not yet been done for a meeting on October fifteenth at seven o'clock. They're gonna go to that meeting to assess with any questions and so forth that they have. But we'd like to see some more information in here about our high school preschool program and what that offers, because I think that's a great opportunity that we could add on here. The school committee has asked for that. And also, they had asked for a couple, a little language change. And so now that we have the new MCAS results and those ranking and everything with our high school, it'd be nice to, to put some of that new information in the brochure. So I'm just asking that the school committee hold off on approving this at this point in time to our next meeting. At our next meeting, we should have a review of it.
Hope so.
Just a question for the process.
Yep.
When the Berlin School Committee is approving this, are they just approving the parts that apply to the Berlin School District, or just overall, or how's this gonna work?
Well, yeah, I think that this would be, that would be applying to the Berlin Memorial School.
Okay.
This doesn't have to go to Boylston, because it's not Boylston's information per se.
Right.
And then it goes to the region.
Okay.
So those are the two committees that would be going in.
Okay. I did have a couple of suggestions. Should I give them to?
You want to give them to Angela?
Or you?
You can write them for the next meeting.
Okay. Yeah, I'll give them to you after. Okay. Well, let's see, public school committee comments.
I'd like to see some video about the new school being put out on the Hondo channel. I know they're gonna have an open house and stuff like that, but, you know. It would be nice if they could put on a virtual board, maybe Christian.
We do actually have new current pictures that Dean Palmaro is on the verge, on the verge of putting into our new, into the building committee portion of the website, because we've been doing a couple of tours the last couple of weeks, and people have been taking pictures and have been sending them to me. So we will be putting those new updated pictures of the school.
Oh, it's on the, on the camera, and give a tour to the camera.
I think that they did do that, but it was a Boylston cable person.
Oh, really?
Yeah. And so it's on Boylston, I would assume, Boylston Cable. I'm sure she'd be happy to make you a copy if you ask her.
We could ask her.
No, it's not, well, it was.
Was Brittany no longer there?
It wasn't Brittany who does it, it's the one, the woman who does the building committee meeting. Oh, and the school committee meetings, the region. I don't remember her first name. A little older, I think, than Brittany.
But, yeah, she does, she did do it, you're right.
She did, she sort of like talked and.
She did, she's been doing the videos. She's got the last tour of the whole building. On video, yeah.
Okay.
Could you try to, you know, just cable access and kind of Berlin?
You could also go on a tour at some point.
I have time. I would love to do it, but that's just kind of wild on TV.
You could do your own video. Okay, any other public or school committee comments? Okay. Future agenda items? I don't know, but we'll, we'll keep this thing on the back burner, this brochure.
Yep.
I don't know that we came across anything tonight.
Well, obviously, the budget was.
Right. Yep. And maybe at the next meeting, would it be that you'd show it, tell us about the October first enrollment?
Finalizing those to speak.
I can't think of anything else.
Is there something else we discussed at this meeting?
What?
I don't know, you don't care.
Oh, that's right, at some point.
That would be a good timing, because we'll have had our professional development day, and I can report out on that, the results of that day, and where we're at.
Okay.
At that point, just, and, and I can do that throughout the year. I mean, give you a progress report as the principal, and then as the curriculum role as well, so.
Would you give you two chairs?
Two chairs. Two, two of these, I was just, all right.
We will be also asking at the, um, October meeting, which is in two weeks, actually, for the region, that you're gonna have for all three, because I'm going to have an M E S C resolution recommendations.
Right.
So just so that everybody knows, we'll be asking to open up all three state meetings at that, or something like that. I guess.
Yep. Okay, I think we're good. We don't have need for an executive session, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. And do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, the bus meeting is. So, the bus meeting is.